I'm good.
Yes, ma'am. I'm about to hop on this meeting, so I'm sorry.
Hello, everybody. Johnny, why are you on mute?
Everyone's on mute, Alan.
Okay. Yo.
I'm muted. And now it's up. I'm on the one and I see anything.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to John Lewis Invictus Academy's seventh and eighth grade virtual town hall. My name is Dr. Venzin, and I also have Mr. Fuller who will be co-hosted with me tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mr. Fuller. I'm the eighth grade assistant principal here at John Lewis Invictus Academy. Welcome to our town hall meeting.
Okay. Question norms. If you'd like to ask a question, please hold all questions at the end to the end of their presentation. Please type these questions in the chat and moderator will address them all questions during the question and answer session after the presentation. Now let's meet our seventh grade teacher. Team seven A, we have Dr. Mack, Andrea McEckren, Mr. Charles Carr, Mr. Jeffrey Tanks.
Uh, Venzin, uh, Dr. Venzin, there's no sound coming through on the YouTube page.
No sound on the YouTube page? Okay, hold on one second.
So there are people in the chat saying that they can't hear.
Okay, I'll take it back.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. Actually, I'm gonna try this. Do they have sound now? Okay. Okay, we're gonna start again because we didn't have sound. I'm sorry about that for the technical difficulties. Good evening. Once again, my name is Dr. Venzin. I'm the seventh grade assistant principal. I'm here along with Mr. Fuller, who is the eighth grade principal, and we're going to be going through our seventh and eighth grade town hall. Question norms. If you'd like to ask a question, please hold all questions to the end of the presentation, and please type the questions in the chat. The moderator will address all questions during the question and answer session after our presentation. This time, I'd like to introduce our seventh grade teachers. First team seven A, Ms. Andrea Mac Eckeren, ELA. Mr. Charles Carr, math. Mr. Jeffrey Tanks, science. Dr. Cherry Smith Pride, social studies. And now Team seven B. Ms. Kendall Ramsey, ELA. Ms. Julie Corey, math. Dr. Stephanie Smith Green, science. And Mr. Franklin Huff, social studies. For Team seven C, Mr. Randall Mosley, math. Mr. Julia Smith, science. Mr. Ruben Dupree, social studies.
All right, everybody. Good evening. Again, this is Mr. Fuller here at John Lewis Invictus Academy. I'll go ahead and introduce your amazing eighth grade teacher, starting with our eight A team. Uh, for ELA, we have Dr. Brody. Uh, for math, we have Mr. Ayo- Ayo- Ayo Boju, but we call him Mr. A. We have Mr. Smith for science and Mr. Behringer for social studies. Um, for ELA, we have Ms. Calhoun. For math, we have Ms. Conover. For science, we have Ms. Jones. And for social studies, we have Mr. Taylor. Uh, for eight C, for ELA, we have Ms. Hausen. For math, we have Ms. Anajobi. For science, we have Ms. Maybank. And for social studies, we have Ms. Jackson Vega.
Okay, our seventh and eighth grade support teachers. We have Mr. Christopher Sapp, who supports ELA seven and social studies seven. Ms. Deborah Mays, math seven and science seven. Ms. Felicia Nelson, ELA seven and social study seven. Ms. Susan Morell, math seven, science seven.
All right, y'all. For our eighth grade team, we got Ms. Thomas for, uh, social studies. We for science, we have Mr. O'Neil. We also have a science. For social studies, we also have, uh, Ms. Armstrong. Support all contents, we have Ms. Miller. Again, support all contents, we have Ms. Porter. Support all contents, we have Dixon Jones, Ms. Dixon Jones. And for our adaptive PE, uh, Ralph Berry.
Okay. Now, if you would like more information on your seventh and eighth grade teachers, if you go to our website, you will see, and I kind of showed you eighth grade. Grade grade has a welcome back video if you click on that. And seventh grade also has a welcome back seventh grade video. If you go to our website and you'll see those under the shortcuts. Now, I'd like to introduce our seventh grade counselor, Mr. Henderson, who'll talk us about, who'll tell, walk us through our virtual schedules.
Okay, thank you. Brandon Henderson here. Uh, all schedules, I want the parents and students to know that all schedules were mailed out earlier this week. But if you hadn't gotten your schedule yet, we're gonna just kind of speak real quickly about the schedule. Uh, our academic day starts at nine o'clock. Your first period is at nine to nine forty-five. Your second period, your elective class is from ten to ten forty-five. And then you go to your third period, and then we have lunch. Lunch is between twelve and one. Then you do your fourth period and your fifth period. Um, at the end of the day, around three, between the hours of three and three forty-five, we will do work on our weekly assignments. That's the time when you just work on your weekly assignments. And then between four and four forty-five, you have your different tutorials. You will have a different tutorial every day. Friday will be dedicated to our clubs. Thank you, Doc.
Good job. Now to introduce our eighth grade students' schedules, um, well, I'll actually turn it over to Mr. Fuller.
All right, yeah, all right, everybody. So you got myself here and our awesome counselor, Mr. Allen. Me and Mr. Allen worked together for years. Um, so I'll let Mr. Allen go ahead and bring himself on. We go way back, and so, um, he's a great counselor. I can vouch for him, y'all. So, uh, without further ado, Mr. Allen, go ahead and bring us in with these eighth grade schedules and let him know, let him know about it. Unmute yourself, Mr. Allen. All right, y'all, Mr. Allen's on mute, so I'll go ahead and, uh, let's see, Mr. Allen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'll call this out. Thanks for the grand introduction, Mr. Fuller. I appreciate that. You're brilliant as well. I'm Mr. Allen. I'm gonna be going over the eighth grade schedule. Uh, if you have any issues or concerns about your schedule, please reach out to me, and I'll be happy to assist you and your student with your schedule. Uh, again, academic classes start at nine o'clock AM, uh, Monday through Thursday. We'll be doing first period. And then ten o'clock to ten forty-five, we'll be doing second period. Eleven, uh, eleven o'clock to eleven forty-five, we'll be doing third. And lunch is for an hour from twelve o'clock to one o'clock. And one o'clock to one forty-five, you'll be in your fourth period. And from two o'clock to two forty-five, you'll be in your fifth period. And then you'll have time to work on your weekly assignments for approximately forty-five minutes from three o'clock to three forty-five, Monday through Thursday as well. Uh, and from four o'clock to four forty-five, you'll have your tutorial. Uh, math, Monday, English, Tuesday, science, Wednesday, and social studies on Thursdays. And Friday will be, is it, it's, um, the makeup day, is it, Mr. Fuller? For Friday? Okay, all right.
We'll, we'll have clubs on Friday as well.
Clubs, right, all right. So again, uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'll be happy to assist you, Mr. Allen.
You know, for eighth grade schedules, guys, we start in electives. So I know that it's very easy to say, hey, oh, well, my, you know, my class doesn't start till ten o'clock, but we need everybody on every single class, every single minute of the day. We've built in breaks into our schedule, so we understand how, um, this schedule and this online platform are gonna call for student stamina, and it's gonna call for you guys to be fully committed to ensuring you engage in every single class, including elective, your first, your second period, your, and even your math tutorial. I need you guys fully invested throughout the entire school day, using that stamina to engage in, in our lessons. Our teachers are ready for you. We're excited to have you back in school in this capacity. So I need everybody engaged and ready to go on Monday.
Great job, Mr. Fuller.
Good job.
This time, I'd like to go through our scholar virtual expectations. This is very important, so I hope you pay close attention. This is virtual expectations. So for virtual expectations, we'd like to begin with the dress code. All students should be appropriately dressed during virtual learning. Here are a few guidelines on what appropriate dress should look like. Uh, no headscarves, colored bandana style bonnets, et cetera. No pajamas or spaghetti strap tops. Must be fully clothed in appropriate top and bottoms. No short shorts, tights, or leggings. Now, if you would like to wear John Lewis Invictus Academy school uniform, that is also an option. To the right in the screen, you'll notice that we have the uniform policy for the academic year of 2021. When we do return to school, seventh graders will wear a gray shirt. Eighth graders will wear a orange shirt. Pants, tan, blue, or black slacks. For the young ladies, we have tan, blue, or black skirts as well. Scholar virtual expectations, called the SOAR, SOAR into virtual learning matrix. I'm gonna start with self-control. Follow instructions. Wait for your turn to speak or contribute. Use the raise your hand feature that will be at the bottom of your screen. Minimize distractions. Utilize chat features appropriately. Mr. Fuller?
All right, the, the O is for on task, y'all, and that means you're gonna log in on time. You're gonna be present, active, and engaged. You're gonna have organized, you're gonna have materials organized, ready to go. You're gonna have daily goals. You're gonna make yourself visible, and you're gonna have a backup plan if you get disconnected. Within that on task framework, y'all, I want you to understand also you are responsible for everything in your virtual space. That means in your background around you, ensure you have maintained a level of professionalism when you get engaged in school. So make sure you all are aware of your surroundings, have your virtual space set up so you could be on task and fully engaged.
Which moves us right into achievement. Complete task on time and stay on top of your assignments. Be prepared. Reach out to the teacher for help. Share and collaborate. Write incomplete sentences. It's very important that you write incomplete sentences. Practice makes perfect.
Right, and then we have respect. Mute your microphone when others are speaking, y'all. Let everybody have their voice. Use proper text etiquette. Um, ensure you're not using all caps or bolds or italics or jokes or sarcasm. We believe in students having an ability to speak, and so we don't wanna stifle your ability to be creative and to share your comments, but y'all have to respect the chat room as well as the microphone and the camera. Um, and resolve conflict peacefully. That means both in the, um, in the social space and the classroom, but also via social media. If you're utilizing a platform other than Zoom or Google Classroom, make sure you are always being respectful and ensuring that you are treating yourselves and your other friends with respect. So don't engage in anything you're not supposed to. It's the same as if we were in school. You don't bully online, no cyber bullying. You make sure that we're engaging in positive things that build each other up. Don't tear each other down.
We will give respect and get respect. And now, scholar virtual expectations continue. Students are expected to participate in the virtual classes in a manner that is productive and, like what Mr. Fuller just stated, respectful. Staff members reserve the right to mute, remove, or limit participants' ability to share on the online platform if the student's behavior is disruptive. Here are some examples of inappropriate behavior that will not be tolerated. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, so when we talk about our virtual behavior expectations, um, just a little bit about my scope and sequence of work, y'all, and my experience and background. I have a diverse background experience from the high school realm, um, as well as in middle school. Uh, and with that, I've been tasked with ensuring that our school maintains a proper discipline protocol and ensure that we are safe and secure at all times, both virtually and, uh, when we come back to school. So students are expected to participate in class and be productive and respectful. Um, staff members, if you are, if, for some reason, your teacher is, um, teaching the class and they see you're being distracted, your teacher can mute you. They can remove you from the classroom. They can hold you accountable, just like you were in, um, a real person setting. So ensure that, y'all, when you are in class, that you are responsible and respecting your professional, personal space, and that if you feel like you're not gonna be successful that day, that you make the adjustment needed to be successful. Do not put yourself in a situation online, uh, where your camera is being, um, used for something inappropriate. So ensure you are respectful and undergo, understanding what your space represents. Uh, accountability will still align to student, Atlanta Public Schools Code of Conduct. So if you are doing something that's not, uh, aligned to our code of conduct, accountability will happen. So I encourage you and, 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 and parents, please hold your students accountable. They are responsible for maintaining a professional virtual space online. No profanity, um, no posting inappropriate content, no making threats or cyber bullying, uh, no stalking, harassing teachers or classmates or any other person in the school. Respect at all times, y'all. We represent John Lewis Invictus Academy, the best school APS has to offer. So I'm asking you to ensure that you are maintaining professionalism and your highest moral character at all times, both in person and virtual.
And that stands for pride. Now, we're going to continue on how to log into our learning platform. Ms. Bright?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Venzin. Hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Bright, and I'm our school's instructional technology specialist. We, um, have been preparing for you guys vigorously through lessons as well as maintaining or assisting in making sure that you have devices so that you're able to log on. We are aware that some of the devices have some issues, and we are working closely with those parents and those families. So if you have not notified the school about a particular issue, please make sure you go ahead and drop that information in the, um, chat so that we can contact you, or you can also call the school so that we can also be able to assist you with getting devices. For your, in order to join in your teacher's first, uh, Zoom session, there are a number of steps that you need to take. Um, the flyer or the flyers that you see on our screen are also posted on our school's website, but there will also be a video tutorial there, um, definitely by tomorrow to help guide you. We also want to make sure that you refer back to our school website for continuous updates on how to, um, troubleshoot certain issues and/or just where to go to get information to help you better, to be better successful online. Um, again, if you're having any issues or any concerns, please make sure that you reach out to the school so that we can assist you and help getting your students online and in their classes. We look forward to seeing you online, online date, August the twenty-fourth. Back to you, Dr. V.
Thank you very much. Great job. We'll continue with talking about the food distribution program. Share things are a little different than they have been in the past, and all APS families must preorder meals for each week through the My School Bucks online preorder system. Those orders must be placed no later than one week before distribution. For example, for August twenty-fourth through August twenty-eighth, the order should have been placed on Monday, August seventeenth. Pickup date will be Monday, twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, between three PM and six PM. The pickup location is at John Lewis Invictus Academy. There are other locations as well, but due to the fact that everyone here is a John Lewis Invictus Academy student or parent, this will be your pickup place. Families who select to have their meals delivered, APS Transportation will call. Families with a range of times when food will be delivered on Mondays. It is important that families make sure their phone numbers and email addresses are accurate and updated in the campus to ensure delivery. At this section, I'd like to discuss any questions that may be in the chat, and I'm gonna ask my moderators to tell me if we have any. Okay, it seems like we have done such a thorough job that we have no questions or answers. And at this time, we would like to close the video out. Actually, Ms. Bright, I think we do have a lot of questions. If you wouldn't mind, one of our moderators to share some of the questions?
I'm with you, Dr. V. I'm trying to monitor the chat and get back with you. Okay, give me just a second and let me see what we got going on over here.
No problem at all. It's fine. We'll look and see what we got.
Okay, here's a question. My daughter's device.
I'm with you, Dr. V. I'm trying to monitor the chat and get back with you. Okay, give me just a second and let me see what we got going on over here.
No problem at all. It's fine. We'll look and see what we got.
Here's a question. My daughter's device does not have Zoom.
Okay, um, the devices don't have, she said her daughter's device does not have Zoom?
Correct.
Ms. Bright, I, I need, if you can, to come off of, uh, YouTube, and it's a Zoom question, so we're gonna direct. And it's a Zoom question, so we're going to direct that question to Ms. Bright. Ms. Bright, are you there?
You're on mute, Ms. Bright.
Okay, I can answer it. Zoom is actually a website, so they would just have to click onto Zoom. And then they can log in that way. Ms. Bright, if you would like to continue from there, you can.
Okay, you hear me? Am I good now? Okay.
Yes.
All right, trying to joke two things. So the parent said that the Zoom is not on the student's, um, device. I would recommend that they go down to the bottom right, um, I'm sorry, the bottom left part of the screen. And where it says type here, type in Zoom and see if that app pops up then. If that doesn't happen, then, um, please contact the school and we'll see about either exchanging device or getting that loaded onto it.
Okay, thank you. Another question. Are students allowed to eat in class? And will there be a uniform that is required and enforced during virtual learning?
Okay, we sort of talked about that uniform and in the expectation. Um, they will not be allowed to eat during class. We want it to be as professional as possible, like they were in class. We will actually have a lunchtime. We'd like their undivided attention while they are in class. And as far as uniform, um, we went back. I can show that slide. Is professional dress?
Yeah. Yeah, we want our students to be dressed professionally, so when it comes to being in, in class online, uh, please ensure that you're dressed, you're, you're dressed, um, in an appropriate manner. For boys, a short or, you know, a shirt, a pair of pants. A girl, shirt and pants. We're trying to get away from sweatpants and pajamas or spaghetti tops, but in a place that's presentable and making sure that we are in a situation for all students to be seen on camera, uh, and that it is appropriate. So just, we want to make sure we follow those guidelines, and they're on the screen right now as well.
Yes, I just put that back on the screen, so if that parent could take a look at the dress code. To the left, we have our virtual expectation. And to the right is what it will be during the year when we do return back to the school.
Okay. How do I sign into the laptop that the school gave me?
Okay.
Okay, I got you.
Thank you.
So in order for a student to sign in the laptop that the school gave them, they need their student username, which is their network ID. If the student doesn't know that or the student is new, then they can contact the school and we'll be able to give that to them and/or their teachers should be able to help them. So the sign-in is their username, uh, which is their network ID, and their password is their lunch number.
And to help you out a little further with that, um, if, if somebody has a note who that parent is in the chat, if they go ahead and copy their number down, I can reach out to you after this video call. And I can go ahead and just give you your chat over, or your number and, uh, login over the phone. So whoever's captured that information, um, just please record the parent's name, and I'll call them tonight and give them that information for them. So you're ready for Monday.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other questions in the chat?
Yes. There's a student that says I can't log into my classroom.
Okay. Um, if I'm thinking, or maybe we can ask for clarification, but if they mean they can't log into their Google Classroom, they need to make sure that they are going in through My Backpack and then accessing the Google, um, Classroom app from there. And once they're in there, then they should see an invite already from their teachers, and they just need to click accept to join the teacher's Google Classroom. If that is not the court, if that's not the problem, then, um, perhaps they can expound upon that so that we can give a more clarifying answer.
My daughter has her own computer. Does she have to download Zoom?
Zoom is the app that is, that will be used for, um, live sessions. So the answer to that would be yes, and in most cases, Zoom may already be on the computer, but if not, then the parent would just go to Chrome, Google Chrome Online and type in Zoom app, and then it should give them the option to download it.
How early can we come on Monday to fix a device?
So if your device, so if your device is, is not working, um, Mr. Fuller asked me, I'll be at the school at 8:10 AM. So if you want to come to the school and we can see if we can try to troubleshoot something else or at the school, um, I'll come to your car and we're trying to see if we can work it out. We have to maintain safe guidelines. We are still exchanging some devices, but we're also, um, and limited to the devices we can exchange. So if you come to the school and you ask for Mr. Fuller, um, in that morning, I'll be at the school. I'll do my best to support you. Um, I do have to make sure we understand that we don't have a ton of device at the school because everyone was, uh, reserved. Um, so if you just reach out to us in the morning, I'll, we'll be answering the phone, and we set up a time to, uh, to get help with that. Uh, but we'll do our best to serve everybody, work for a device. Um, so just to be clear, we don't have a ton at the school at this point because we did, uh, divvy a lot of the not to parents who requested them. That's why everybody has one. Um, but if you're not, if it's not working, I think also be important to understand that, um, it could be, be an issue with maybe you need to log in, um, with the correct username and password. We're also finding that, I think Ms. Bright, you can probably expound on this, is that if you get on the school's Wi-Fi network, it typically will fix the issue. So if you come by the school in the morning, logging in the school parking lot, it should allow you to work through that issue and get on the device. Um, and from my understanding, we'll also have some more information on our website about troubleshooting login issues. So if you're trying to log in, uh, and it's not working, we'll have some stuff on the website that will help you get that fixed as soon as possible.
Um, Mr. Fuller, you are correct about being on the school's network, that that does sometimes rectify some of the problems.
Yep.
And it doesn't, even though I know most of our scholars are within our vicinity, but it could be any APS property, as long as it's an APS property, then, um, it could connect to the APS network.
Will there, will there be anyone at the school this weekend?
Uh, there, there will be no one at the school this weekend. Um, if it is a technical issue, uh, they can call 1-1000 as well, 448021000, but there will not be anyone here this weekend.
And the last question, my computer is broken. How can I get a new one?
Um, so for that, um, Ms. Green, for that one, can you please just copy that student's information for me? And I'll reach out. This is to kind of get clarification of what we mean by a broken device. Um, so and just to help, if you're still watching, if you had a broken device over the last week and it was during device distribution, then we'll need to see if we can schedule a time to, uh, get that replaced. If by broken you mean you can't log in, or there's an issue with the, this login and username and password, then we'll need to get that cleared up. So I'll get your information and we'll get that looked at. I see clarification of what you mean by actually broken. Um, so we had to look at that. But we'll get you taken care of. You, if you don't have a device, it is our goal for every scholar to have a working device to access the online platform. We understand that, um, that it is urgent, and so we'll do our best to serve you as fast as possible. Like I said, we'll be here early Monday morning. But remember, we do have school starting Monday, so we'll be, uh, focusing on teaching and learning. Um, but we will do our best to serve you as fast as possible.
Okay, at this time, if we have no further questions, I would like to let everyone know Mr. Garner is here on the call. And I'd like to introduce you to our principal, Mr. Garner.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent, and, and all other, uh, staff members who have been a part of, part of the, uh, virtual town hall. Uh, listen, I won't take much of your time. Just wanted to come on. Um, hopefully we still have some, some parents and families who are still, uh, engaged. I just wanted to come on just to, first of all, introduce myself, uh, let you guys, uh, see who I am if you hadn't, have not had the opportunity to do so. Uh, the other part to that is I must acknowledge the fact that, I believe the last check that I had, we, we had about 35 participants. And so I know, you know, total seventh and eighth grade, we probably have well over 600 students. And so, uh, for the, for the families who are here, we definitely are grateful that you are here. But I must say that, uh, our expectations have to grow exponentially such that we have a, a good representation of the families here to receive all of the good information that everybody needs. Because I'm sure that there are several families who, who need this information that they're getting as it relates to schedules, as it relates to, you know, how to order food, as it relates to, um, what you need to do if your device is not working, working, so on and so forth. Uh, and so I'm going to take it upon myself to say that we have to do a better job of getting more of our families involved. Uh, with that, Monday is the first day of school, and we are definitely excited and ready. Uh, parents who are on the call, let me tell you that our teachers are ready. Our teachers are ready. They are prepared. They have planned out not only the first week of school, but also the second week of school. So when we get into our PLCs, we'll be actually starting to plan the third week of school. Uh, they already know what they're going to assess and how they're going to assess our students. Um, so our teachers are prepared. They've really spent this time to really get ready. They're fired up. They're ready to go. Uh, we just need our students to be there. We need them to be there on time. I, I must say, and I'll send out a calling post over the weekend, this is not like March. Again, this is not like March. And so the expectation is, and I need for everybody to spread the word, that you have to do work. You have to be at school and you have to do work in order to, to, to progress to the next grade level. So, uh, I'll send a calling post out again this weekend to express that. But, uh, students must be at school. It's too important, um, um, for them to be there, for them to miss. And so again, please spread that word. It is not like it was when, when the pandemic first hit us and we were just kind of trying to figure things out. But now we've had some experience with this, and so they must be at school in order to pass, in order to move on. Uh, with that being said, I'm very easy to find. I'll be here at the school each and every day. Um, so if you need something, give us a call. I anticipate that we'll have a lot of phone calls on Monday. Uh, please spread the word that people need to practice. Don't wait until Monday morning at, at, at 8:50 to log on for the first time. Actually, go into My Backpack and practice now. Can I access My Backpack? Can I ask, can I access a Google Classroom? Do I need to join a Google Classroom? Where do I see the Zoom link? Uh, set your workstation up such that Monday morning, when it's time for school, you can sit there, uh, log on, you have your pencil and paper ready, and you're ready to go. All right, we're excited, we're excited, we're excited. Uh, I'm going to leave you with that. Uh, choose Invictus, choose greatness, and we will see you on Monday morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. And parents, if you have any, uh, of your, if you know any other students, parents that you may know or live close to, please spread the word that if they missed tonight's session, it will be on our, if you look on our YouTube Live link on our website, they'll be able to see tonight's broadcast, and that way they can get all the information they've missed as well. And with that being said, thank you so much.
One more thing, Dr. V. I'm sorry, one more thing. Check the website daily, parents. Check the website daily. That the website is going to be your best friend as it relates to how to log on. All the information will be there, so check our website daily. Thank you.
That concludes tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank you all and have a great night. That concludes tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank you all and have a great night.